You got it here.
Good evening, I would like to call this meeting of the planning commission to order at this PM on November nineteenth. Did I get the tape right?
Yes.
Very good, nineteen twenty twenty-five, please do a little fast.
Okay, Chairperson Frenzel on Zoom. Co-Chairperson Miznick here. Commissioner Keglish is on.
Here.
Member Shanaleen.
Here.
Member Dori Recky.
Here.
Member Thomas.
Here.
Administrator me. And Mayor Proten is here. Okay. All right, you have a quorum letter, your co-chair.
Thank you so much. Have you all looked through your agenda? I would entertain a motion to accept an agenda.
I entertain that motion.
Second, a second. Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will accept the agenda.
Aye.
The big question is on the meeting, and it's for the August twentieth meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the August twentieth meeting. The motion. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now we come to our public comments. Hearing it. I would like to remind the public of our public comment parameters. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers are required to sign in, state their name and address for the record. Speakers will be called in the order of how they are signed in. Public comments must be specific to the application raised. Or the issue being heard. So we just have two applications on our agenda this evening, so those are the two applications we will hear public comments on. Speakers will refrain from any personal attacks. Avoid awful vanity and disruptive behavior. Speakers must stick to factual or relevant testimony to the applications being heard. Once the public comment period has closed, no further comments will be allowed. Do not raise your hand asking to be allowed to speak and do not speak out and attempt to interrupt the discussion or the deliberations of the commissions. Finally, anyone failing to follow these parameters will be given consideration in violation of the meeting procedures and asked one time to cease and desist. If there is a second time, the committee chair, pro-chair, will have the person escorted by law enforcement and not allowed to re-enter this meeting. And we will have the first public comment at this time.
Okay, I have a written one that I want to start with, so I will start the timer and I'll read fast. Dear members of the board, I hope you're doing well, I'm ready to share my thoughts regarding the consideration of issuing either an additional liquor license within our small town or replacing the current liquor license with a new owner. I want to express my strong support for the existing bar that has been part of the community for the past five and a half years and to voice my concerns about allowing a second bar to operate alongside it or replace it. Our current bar, Kiowa Bar, has consistently shown dedication to running a responsible, hospitable, and fully compliant establishment. The owners had demonstrated professionalism, good communication, and genuine commitment to the well-being of the community. Beyond their compliance, they have gone above and beyond their involvement in local activities, they sponsor nearly every community event, Albert County Fair, Cowboy Up rodeo, Responder Relief Rodeo, along with holiday gatherings, wakes for lost community members, and even fundraising events where proceeds go to help our children in the community. Their willingness to support enough of the people who live here has made a meaningful and lasting impact. Given the size of our community, I am concerned that adding a second bar would strain the limited customer base and potentially create unnecessary competition that could jeopardize the stability of the longstanding businesses we already have. The existing bar has proven itself to be reliable, safe, engaged, and deeply valued part of the town, and I believe it deserves the continued opportunity to serve our community without additional pressures that our population may not be able to support. For these reasons, I respectfully request that the board consider the implications of approving another liquor license or replacing the current license with another business. I wholeheartedly ask for you to continue to support the current buy bar, allowing them to maintain their license and place their place in our town and community, thank you for your time, attention, thoughtful considerations, sincerely, Emily Vasquez. Sandy, can you meet yourself there?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. And that is the end of that one.
Sure, you need to make up lessons.
See who we are. We need a name.
They're not a done up by themselves.
Yeah. Okay. Lynette, you are next. I will run the timer, and then when it goes off, at the end, you see me.
Okay, perfect. All right, and first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak. Good evening, my name is Lynette, and I'm the manager of Elizabeth Kitchen and Bar and the Kiowa Bar. I've known Ted and Cory for over seven years, and in that time, I've seen firsthand how hardworking, dedicated, and caring they are. Their commitment to our community is unwavering, and I truly believe that allowing them to move into and own their own building will benefit everyone involved. The town, Kiowa Bar, myself as an employee, as well as others who rely on and enjoy what we bring in the community. Kiowa Bar has been a staple in this community for a little over five years, and that time, we built traditions and relationships that mean a great deal to us. We want to continue those traditions and a place we can truly call our own through actual property ownership. At Kiowa Bar, we've had the honor of hosting weddings, birthdays, celebrations of lives, and countless local events. We're a proud supporter of Cowboy Up and host a cookout for them every year. Our bar has always been more than a business, we see ourselves as part of the heart of Kiowa. We love our little town and want to continue serving and supporting it for many years to come. With that, I respectfully ask the planning commission to allow Kiowa Bar to operate at two-two-eight Comanche. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Alum, you are next.
I'm coming out. Debbie Alum, my home address would be one-one-one-nine-five Copper Canyon Circles. So I am the property owner of two-two-eight Comanche Street. It has been, well, we're space restoring some office stuff, but that's about it. I've moved my office up to the campground. I can't be in two places at once. We are excited over the opportunity to be able to sell the building to these guys and let them move forward and go move on. The building has a ton of history, and I love the fact that the outside of it, and they're keeping the safe, and they're keeping a lot of the character to it. So, and we have faith in them, I will tell you, we are, not that it's anybody's, but we have offered to do them an owner carry because we have faith in what they're doing. So I think that's huge, or we wouldn't be willing to do that. So I just want you guys to know that that's what they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Joey.
Hi, everybody, my name is Joey Kuhn, I am just peachy, I'm currently renting or leasing the buildings to Ted and Cory, which is Ted Finley. My concerns right now are that, you know, the Kiowa, the Kiowa Bar right now is not in the position to move, and I'll tell you why. They have obligations to two-two-two Comanche at this time, which is my address. Unpaid rent, damages, breach of contract, an eviction settlement that they need to settle with, and we have an existing court case in the Albert County Court through an attorney. Even bigger than that, I found out new information on K-Bar LLC, also known as Ted Finley or Ted Lee, Ted D. Finley, Lee Finley, that he has two court cases right now in the Supreme Court of New York. One was filed on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. The other one was filed on November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. And these are big cases because they're in the Supreme Court, which means it's big dollar. If you allow him to start another business in this town, and he's not settled even with the one that he already owes money to, I mean, it's probably going to get ugly. One thing, he's not going to be able to settle with the business he already owes money to while he's still trying to settle it with the New York Supreme Court. And these cases are on file, and I do have evidence, if you guys want the copy, or I could give it to Cam, and she can use that through the attorney, whatever you'd like. So at this time, I would ask you guys to not allow it. I would say, you know, later on, if they get all of their obligations solved, maybe then you consider it. Because it just wouldn't be fair to me or anyone else that's owed thousands of dollars worth of money, right? So thank you for your time, do you want this camera, or do you want me to give it to?
I could have, yeah.
Okay. You, do you want them to have one, or just you?
Just me right now.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who came that isn't on the list that would like to speak?
I can speak.
Okay, what's your name, dear?
So we got two people on our.
Thank you.
All right. Stacy, S-T-A-C-Y. My handy dandy notes. Okay. I am here tonight because I want to share my perspective on the decision about Kiowa Bar moving to a new location. Having a Kiowa Bar operate in a building owned by the bar owners provide a level of stability, long-term commitment, that benefit the entire community. Ownership removes the uncertainty that comes with leases such as rent increases, non-renewals, or unexpected relocating. Instead, it allows the bar to maintain a consistent location, atmosphere, and experience that customers rely on. Most importantly, owning their building shows a strong lasting commitment to Kiowa and ensures that the gathering place remains a dependable part of the town for years to come. Versus the exchange, I'm sorry, I got a piece of hair, the exchange will be operating in a leased space, which means their lease will eventually need to be removed. Lease properties come with the possibility of lease terminations or ownership changes, which can create instability for customers. Over the five years, the Kiowa Bar has been more than just a place to grab a drink. The people who run it have consistently shown that they take their responsibility seriously, they follow the rules, treat people well, and maintain a safe, welcoming environment. But what really stands out is how involved they are in the heart of their own town. They are the ones stepping up to sponsor events like Albert County Fair, Cowboy Up Rodeo, the Responder Relief Rodeo, holiday gatherings, celebration of lives, and numerous of foundations for their local children. Their support is ongoing and dependable. Kiowa Bar has shown tremendous dedication to Kiowa, and that level of commitment will remain unchanged. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments at this time?
Hey, what's your name, dear?
My name is Cyrus Cole, I'm seven generations born in Albert County. My family owns Sea Lazy Tea Tru Movers out of Albert and Sea Lazy Tea Cattle Company. I've been in this community literally my whole life and multiple families back. I have one major objection to not allowing two liquor licenses in the town of Kiowa, and that is the fact that this community is growing at an exponential rate not seen in my lifetime. The county has just approved seven thousand new homes ten miles north of here. So to say that our community is going to be too small to support one bar, no. Sorry, but no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for public comments.
Sir, anybody online who wants to speak? No, doesn't appear that anybody online wants to speak.
All right, public comments are at the buzzer, go ahead.
I just want to say I'm in support of two bars.
Hold on, can you?
Karen Carter, Albert County resident since nineteen ninety-seven. In support of the growth that we're seeing. There's two different types of people that want to go out and have fun. The community's growing, two bars should not be an issue. I personally know the owner that's proposing in the old location of the Kiowa Bar, she is respectable, dependable, loved working with her. I've loved my association with her, she's always, she's goal-driven, she's into this community, she's a good person. So I don't have any issues with two bars to go to. I'm a strong supporter, and I've been active with the Elizabeth Stampede for twenty-five years. So I know that it'll be well received by all the rodeo community, they would have two different places to go.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Public comment. I'm Charles Ryder, I work for Ted and Cory currently. They're great guys, like they're upstanding community members and everything else. I love working for them. The thing is, is who cares if there's two bars, if we actually communicate and get together, it could be a great thing for our community. I support Kiowa Sports, I'm out there at the volleyball games, basketball games, everything else. I grew up out there. And the thing is, these guys are actually good people. Support. It's really not that hard, I love them both, so. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We had a couple more people enter, is anybody who just entered the Zoom, do any of you wish to give public comment? Okay, I'm guessing that's a no. All right, just thought I'd give them a chance, because there was a couple left here that just showed up.
Thank you. Public comments are closed at this time, and we will move to the special, considering the special use permit for two-two-eight Comanche to operate as a bar known as Kiowa Bar. You guys have any? I can explain my thoughts.
Do you want Cory and Ted to come up and speak?
Sure, sorry, I didn't mean for Cory and Ted, can you please come up and pitch for application, is that what they're doing?
Yes.
All right.
They're going to speak to their application.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the guidance.
They just kind of had this look like, oh.
I'm Cory, so we run the Kiowa Bar right now, we are looking to relocate to the two-two-eight Comanche Street. We've been purchasing the building, so that would be our longevity with Kiowa is our goal. As you guys have saw the plan and everything, we've followed all the proper procedures as far as making sure that the bar is to standards, all the guidelines, making sure it's safe, just like it has been before. But the overall goal is with us purchasing the buildings, our time in Kiowa will be here forever, so we would like to continue that partnership, especially with the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So it looks like they have done their veto and then
Yeah.
And with Safe Built, there are some, I can't find them. Just say them in the form of the summary, the summary versus, that has summary for Safe though. But has some additional.
It should be on page.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, H eight.
Yeah. H nine.
Yeah, P G, H nine. H ten.
Yeah, nine and ten.
Yeah, eight, nine, and ten is the Safe Built summary.
So as far as some of the issues that have been raised in public comments, they don't pertain to building use. And what we are only getting, they have some small issues that have, you know, bearing on our decision. So pros and cons. So what we have to consider is, does this building follow the, does it follow our master plan? Is it in line with what we approve? Should this approve? Let's have a discussion.
I believe it follows our master plan.
It does too.
I guess. We
Yes, that's all, they have to make some modifications to, in order to get their permanent, they might have to follow.
Right, because it was an office building, it was used as an office, and it's going to change the, like, the amount of people, that's why the fire.
Their fire codes or their fire.
Right.
Change some of the regulations for the fire. So they have to meet the new regulations.
They obviously know that, I mean, the fire department's on it, they don't meet all those.
They don't get a certificate of office. Correct.
So, but I agree, we can't, we can't base our opinion on their past.
Correct.
Or their, or what they might or might have.
Or whether this is a good business decision or not.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's solely their decision to make.
So it's a number of complaints, concerns, those are not able to be addressed. Having modeling and stuff. They could fit into space. And they're adding a space, chief, aren't they? Just a little bit, just a hundred square feet, but it looks like they're.
Going through the fire inspection. Someone who deals with fire inspections all the time, I'm sorry, there's anything I'm doing that really. This isn't unusual, I mean, it's all, this is easily, easily negligible. Yeah, so.
The basic three model.
First, they don't see any problem with.
Okay. It's only about a hundred square feet, so it looks like they're taking out some of this. That's, that's the end. So it looks like they're it looks like they're taking out this bathroom. But this is, this is not a area. And this is proposed. And then taking out some of this area.
Yeah, part of that is they have to make the bathroom ADA compliant, so.
But that existing, it's got three bathrooms, and they're going to do two. But it's not being added on in the rear or anything, it's the existing space. Yes, yes, but the footprint stays the same, the livable area inside is what the changes area.
Usable.
Usable, that's what they call it, nobody's living there. See, this is, is there present that? Yes, this is, this is the bathroom. Correct, that's correct. What would be the occupancy of the bar on the proposed? To me, they're about seating for about forty, so within thirty, that might be in the size fifteen, maybe another people standing around sixty, seventy-five, and that's okay with. Ted or Cory, do you know what your proposed occupancy is?
So we're waiting for the stamp design permit, whatever, and he said based on that, we would know that.
Is my ballpark about right?
Yeah, I know it's under eighty.
Okay. So Safe Built has added some conditions, there's approval. Names of occupancy under fire code. Basically, that's mostly it, is the, we need, we need the fire code, yeah.
At one point, we did discuss, like, you know, having two of this, like, whenever we're redoing all of our two, two of the same in a certain amount of area.
Right.
Which, at that time, our, I think, the general viewpoint was we've got to be, you don't want to take away from an existing business, so.
But at this point, neither of them are going to be existing, they're both going to be new businesses, they both have to apply for new liquor licenses. One location because it's changing ownership, the other location because it's changing use and.
And, and building, yes, and address, yes, they have to, I have the liquor license applications for both entities. The one has to put in for a transfer, and the other has to put in for a new, so I have them in a file pending all this. So they have both filled out that paperwork.
I think that would be my concern, but I'm not saying, you know, that's just a thought as we were planning out the new code in the last year.
So if it, if they both go in, our street would look like office building, bar, restaurant, bar, restaurant, office building, liquor chain. So don't think, I mean, there's two.
And there'd be like two coffee, kind of Patty Mans next door to a coffee shop also. I will tell you, is that true, based on the code? There's no basis for disallowing. To disallow it.
Correct.
Okay, but I will also correct some comment that was made tonight, because it seems to be focused on two liquor licenses in the downtown area, there is already more than two liquor licenses in the downtown area. So this isn't a matter of how many liquor licenses are there, and how many are too close to each other, about restaurants don't actually serve liquor. So liquor license is a mute subject.
Yeah. It's really the business, so.
And I don't think about how they own specials, specialty poppings.
Not specialty, no.
People are going to Patty Mans for a specialty.
It is different, different copy. What about parking as C-Dot is going to be doing?
Question.
I mean, do we know how the parking is going to be on the road after the C-Dot?
It won't be a straight sidewalk. With parking all the way down on a straight sidewalk, there's going to be, I think they call them buttouts.
Yeah.
Like the curbs out.
Yeah, yeah, so people can, what people view is they go into park, so.
Back out.
But it'll still be parallel park.
Still be parallel park, and you're pulling into, like, you're pulling into the sidewalk. Because now the lanes are going to be two lanes, so it's going to be, they have to be outside the lanes of traffic. Yeah, so you'll tuck into park, so you're not out.
And then pedestrians will come out.
There's the three designated walk across.
Yes.
That are going to be revised for better view, viewing by incoming traffic both ways. Basically, we're not, we're not gaining any parking, it's going to be safer parking, but it's not going to be additional parking.
Is there going to be parking in the back?
If you read the review that starts on page thirty-one.
No, so it's straight.
There is acknowledgement that the back area will be used for deliveries. All parking will be out on eighty-six.
Although I know a lot of people will park around Nordman in the evenings.
Is Nordman the?
Yeah, they park around the park. They park around the park, yeah, around Nordman, a lot of people, a lot of people park at the park and walk over. Yeah, and some of them will park over at the county parking lot and walk over. Because of the evenings by the old courthouse, you know, there's nothing going on there in the evenings, so.
And Safe Built's review of this does specifically call out that based on the analysis and the data collected, they
Based on the analysis and the data collected, they cannot find any substantial impact. Um, that is to a negative, um, for the area businesses.
Yeah.
Right.
Any more questions? We've had just kinda thoughts on bands at night, would that, I mean, would there be?
With a what?
Cause you can hear the, yeah, throughout the town.
Noise or the order in those places? I, I can only hear from the park bands.
I enjoy the music, I mean, but I just wonder if there's.
So this bar outdoor, and you can confirm this with Cory and Ted. Will not have a back patio with live music outside.
Okay.
Theirs will all be contained within the building.
They were, they were gonna have like a stage or, right?
Yeah, we would have an outdoor, like, basically mostly a seating and stage area, but we do not plan to have like any bands. If we did have any kind of music, it'd be like an individual.
This Kyle Bar has outdoor music now at current location?
Oh, and yes, I'm not, well, but currently, right now, we just do, um, basically individual soloists.
Are they ever outside?
Sometimes, areas. But we do follow the ordinance, make sure that they are inside by the time.
That they might have permits. In the past.
Not being in the lines.
Right, but that's the food trucks problems, yes, not the bars now.
They're sort of saying the bar.
Agreed, but that is the food trucks.
Yep. But then, if, if that were. I mean, if we're already taking up parking on the, on the street.
Right, but the food trucks technically cannot park in.
They have to be off, so they. By the alley or.
Yes, the park or something. Right, they have to be off street.
And I guess we should confirm too, they wouldn't necessarily, I, the alleyway is a concern for me and this only. It's not, like I said, not a concern, but there's a lot of traffic back there too. The alley's used a lot. Vehicle, but also, um, food delivery, like the food deliveries that I stay. But there's already businesses that are giving that, so.
Cory and Ted, can you confirm for me? Because when we had our pre-up meeting. You alluded to the fact that you would not have room on the back patio to create a deck and an outdoor seating. Concert area.
Correct.
Has that changed?
No, the only thing that we actually are asking for, just at the liquor side of it, was just to make sure that we could have outdoor seating back there. So we included that, just to make sure that that part of it, but we did not find out like a crazy stage or.
Like what you have now.
Correct.
Let's confirm in that.
Yes. If I may, just on the food delivery part you were questioning, so currently, all the current businesses or restaurants right now, we all share the same vendor. Or where to be wholesale from, and so they deliver, um, once a week on a truck, and they deliver to every single restaurant at the same time.
Okay.
Oh. I did not know that, that's handy.
Back to the deck, so there's, so I'm trying to look for page twenty-six, you said?
Yes.
Okay. But you said they're not actually gonna have a desk. It's just a fenced-in area, so they can allow, they can have liquor within that patio.
Not patio seating.
Right, so if someone wanted to go outside and smoke and have a, and have their beer out there.
Okay.
And that's, that has to fall under the liquor application.
Yeah, that was a liquor, well, that's why we did the perimeter.
Right, that has, that has to be included for their liquor application.
So it's, it would be like right there. Any idea on square foot, did, I'm sorry if I missed that.
It's approximately.
It's a twenty.
Nine by twenty-five.
Yeah.
Oh, so this empty space on this map is the.
At the top.
Is the deck, not the.
It's not a desk.
It's not a desk.
It's gonna be, it's the patio area that's.
Yes. Yeah, they'll just, right, they'll just put a little metal fence, because that way people could go sit outside. If they wanna have their beer outside, because they, right, they, they must have that. Um, for their liquor permit, if they want that, so, so it has to be included. Right, correct, okay.
Wendy or Sandy, do you guys have any comments you want to add?
No, I'm good. I'm good, thank you.
I will entertain a motion to approve this application.
And move it to the.
Well, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna say something.
More discussion, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, yeah.
The, the fact that Mr. Finley. Came to Kyle to choose to start a business. And decided to start laying his roots here. And to take on his own, his own building and everything, and start building a business. In Kyle, we should be proud of that, we should be excited for that. I mean, yeah, I'm all for it.
I guess my. The thing I paused on is two similar businesses right near each other, that is only my pause.
But it's no different than having the taco place and Patty Ann's and Beno's all within.
So. I mean, if you look at restaurants, but if you look at different types of restaurants, I guess, that's how.
Right. Although I'm guessing the bars will be a little different, cause I think.
They are different.
Speaking to Ted and Cory, theirs is more of like a lounge. Kind of.
Okay.
Mellow vibe, where.
And then the coffee bar in the morning.
With the coffee bar in the morning, yes. And I think Tabitha's is gonna be more of the, I mean, we'll get to her, but I believe, just speaking to her, it's gonna be more of a traditional. Bar.
What it is right now.
Correct.
Similar.
Yes.
I personally think it's a great idea to have a coffee shop in the morning, and a bar in the night.
Real, just a real quick question on that, I mean, it is a great idea, there's probably gonna be a lot of people stopping, are we able, gonna be able to handle that? Like, people stopping in the morning, there's gonna be enough places on the road and.
They already do it.
They already do it.
Yeah.
I mean.
Can't stop that from.
No, I'm not saying stop, but we gotta.
No, I, I know, I guess that was the wrong word, I mean, we. We gotta look around that and.
I know, but I just wanna make sure it's safe, because I think that road gets really, obviously, C-Dot's doing a lot.
Right.
But it's very, it's just, it's.
Well, that's the reason though too, is we are. Shrinking it down to two lanes with one that doesn't need to turn, is people are gonna have to slow down. They don't, they don't have a choice, we're gonna have six-foot ADA sidewalks on both sides. They, they have to slow down with a single lane, one way, no one can speed past anybody else.
Fact of the matter is, it's our commercial district, right, period.
Yeah.
And that's where our businesses are, and that's where people have to park, whether they park up a hill and walk all the way down, whatever that looks like. That's where the parking's at, and we can't restrict business in the business district. Because we perceive the parking to not be enough, it's Kyle.
Yeah, that's not, I'm more concerned about people trying to cross the road, like.
Well, and we.
It's gonna be addressed.
We are gonna have those designated crosswalks with raised.
And lights.
A hub there.
People can push.
We're gonna have a raised thing, so if someone's trying to cross and they can't quite make it, they will have an island to stand on. Before they cross the next aisle. So, that's part of the road stuff.
I know, just snowplows will hit it. No, I know, I'm just joking. But, I just, I, my concern is the safety, cause I think coffee, specialty coffee will draw a lot of people in, in the morning.
I mean, that's, that's a chance to even build more business on the lane, just, because as that chapter comes in. No, I would still do it now, I wanna say that.
Well, and the coffee piece of it, just FYI, the coffee piece does not actually fall under this purview. Because the coffee shop doesn't need a special use permit to open.
So it's just the.
Just the bar piece. So the coffee shop could.
Coffee shop's absolutely permitted use.
Right.
Yes. The road, and the, people cross, you know, when you try to watch people cross the road, but we know that that's getting addressed.
Yes.
At some point in time, so.
Next spring.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the special use permit. Of two-two-eight Comanche. With the conditions for approval outlined in the Safe Built letter. And move it to the town board. Would anyone like to make that motion?
This is Wendy, I would like to make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second that move.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. So this will be moved to the town board. Our next order of business is a special use permit. For two-two-two Comanche, a new bar known as eighteen ninety-one. Big change. Um, this permit does not require any. Um, I'm sorry, public comments.
She's the new, she's the new bar person. Yeah, it does not require, uh, Safe Built, because she's not changing any structure to the building, it is as it.
Very good.
Is, does that make sense? So there's, there's no need unless she decides to later, at a later date. Change structure, but then that's just a building permit, but at this time, there is no need for that.
Sorry to throw something really quick, I just said, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. My name's Tabitha King, and I'm honored to stand before you, I formally announced my application for eighteen ninety-one Exchange and Saloon. I'm currently under contract to purchase the twenty-two Comanche Street. This project has been carefully, in careful planning for some time, and it's meaning it. I'm nervous, sorry, and it means a great deal to me to finally share with, with, share it with the community. As many of you know, the building I'm applying to operate is the oldest building in town. Plays with history, stories, and character that deserve to be preserved. My goal is not to change its identity, but to honor it, restore it, and breathe new life into a space that has been part of Kyle's roots for over a century. I am genuinely excited for the opportunity to become part of the community in a meaningful way. I believe eighteen ninety-one Exchange and Saloon can be more than just a bar. My vision is for it to become a busy, thriving, profitable establishment that serves as true. And that serves as a true asset to Kyle. I wanna help generate local revenue, create new jobs, and build a place for residents to feel welcome, connected, and proud to bring friendly and friends. My focus is on responsible growth, economic contribution, and a positive partner to the town. With your support and the power to helping the community grow, while preserving the historic integrity that makes it special. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to present my vision of eighteen ninety-one Exchange and Saloon. I look forward to answering any questions and hopefully becoming a long-term asset to this wonderful town.
Thank you.
Yes, it already meets those regulations for fire.
In the back patio, you were still saying that anything was, as existing, was, was Tabitha?
Uh, yes, basically, yes, the, the structure of the area is not going to change.
No, I'm gonna have to replace what was taken out of there, but we're gonna keep the same layout.
The foot, the footpath.
Yeah, I'll, I'll submit new plans to get, um, actual building that's up to code and follow all those parameters.
Yeah, but the actual area.
Is that? Not addressed since.
It is. It is, it's in there, page forty-one, the apartments are not going to change. So same thing, no structural changes there. They will still be rented out as apartments.
Well, I think this one's kind of easy. Starting an operation as a bar.
Yes, new, new ownership. New vision, new vision.
Any discussion on this one?
Not sure they.
You all have any discussion, comments? I will entertain a motion to approve this special use permit and send it to the town board for considerations.
I second that.
Uh, no, I'll, Sandy moves. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. This motion has been approved. I see no old business on our agenda, I see no new business on the agendas. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes.